Check one to one. Okay. Were we on just before, because we just had two things happen? We got everything that was.
We just, we just seated him.
Okay.
You were on the public hearing.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. All right, so let's, we've opened, we've opened the regular meeting and I'd like to entertain a motion to seat Leon Sloane as a member.
I'll make a motion to seat Leon.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So carried? All right, let's move to number four, item number four, Z E O report. Got a lot of phone messages.
Not much going on, huh?
Well, we have some classes, people interested in this call and trying to know what the regulations are, what they can put there, assuming laws are filed with a lot of interest up there, whether they can use the board.
So there are more positive phone calls instead of?
The phone is on with the phone. They're all looking for you. They've got it. See if there's property.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
Any else have any questions? If not, let's move on to number five, approval of the public hearing meetings from, excuse me, from December. Does everybody have a chance to look at them?
Yep.
I have a couple of corrections. Sorry. I have an H in my name. It seems to come and go. I'm not, I'm not really that concerned about it. And then on page, page two, the very last word of the third paragraph, I looked up agreeance in the Webster, not there, so I'm thinking that should be agreement. There's one other place where that occurs. Well, I happen to like agreeance better, but. And then on page, two, three, four, nope, sorry, page five, the very last, the very last sentence of page five, the chair, if staff had anything else asked. Pop the word ask in there. And then finally on page, two, three, four, five, six, page seven, paragraph at the bottom, six, six lines up, small trees will be aligned on the street, along the street next to the utility poles, there will be more shade trees. Did we mean shade or is a shade a technical term? Is it shade?
Shade. Like shade.
I think it's supposed to be shade, so I said shade.
Can you number the pages too?
Oh, Joe, you're good.
Huh?
You're good. I read through this twice, I don't catch any of this.
Are you, I cheated. I had one more head in the spare room.
He has secretaries.
No, I actually did it. Then. Sorry, real quick, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, on page nine, paragraph one, two, three, four, starts pop answer that mainly the trees, then it goes to the second question, the second sentence, there are no trees that are wolf trees or wide ranging or have their, or have, or have been there for years. All the trees are fairly the same age, so if you save one tree, later we'll come back with being asked why they saved it. Was there something left out in that statement? Okay, yeah, okay, I just. And hopefully that's it, keep losing track of the page, and yeah, we should probably number the pages.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Another disagreeance, which is no big deal. I didn't, that's all I have, anybody else? Maybe want to make a motion to approve the minutes for the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to approve the meetings for the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Still carried unanimously? Approval of the regular meeting minutes, December 12th. Everybody had a chance to look at those?
She thought your name here.
Yeah, my name is an H, you should probably take the H out of that one, out of that. I didn't see anything with that, so.
I'm, I'm not on it. And it says I was seated, so.
I missed that one. Good catch.
Yeah?
Figured you would catch that. All right. Public comment, any from, anybody from the public want to say anything?
We didn't.
Pardon me?
We didn't, we didn't approve this. I'll make a motion.
Sorry, my apologies.
Yeah, I know you want to get her. I'll make a motion to approve the regular minute meetings from December 12th with the amendment.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I abstain, I should have abstained from the previous also.
Okay, we can check, we can check that. All right, so carried, so approved. Any public comment? Anybody from the public wish to speak? Any public? All right, now let's move on to Bladen Ridge Affordable Housing Development. And what we're going to be discussing, well, I guess it's really eight, nine, and 10 all at once, right? They're all saying the same thing. We have, we have to act on this by next meeting. That's when our time expires. So what we, what I'd like to do tonight is start discussions, we may not get all the way through, but I want to at least start discussions. I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense maybe to get the other things out of the way first real quick, because I, I think we have, I think number 12 has gone off, is that correct? No?
I can stay right there.
All right, well then should we, we may be going quite late, potentially. Well, it's only 8:30. All right, in that case, let's, let's move into then discussion on the application of the text change at Bladen's Ridge. And to start it off, the way I think I'd like to do this is, just to get a quick, quick overview, counsel, the attorney for developer went through the criteria that we have to look at, and I just want to review that really quickly, and then I'll give my thoughts on, briefly, what I think about this. And then I think we should go commissioner by commissioner, and we should each give our thoughts on what we've heard in the record. Remember, we're only considering things that we have heard in the record, and that was for the, not for the site plan hearing, but just for the hearing on the amendment to the regulations.
What you're talking about, text change, right?
Text change, right, and the map change, right. So it's those hearings that we're discussing, not what we may have heard, may have heard the exact same things tonight, but nothing from tonight was supposed to, should be in our consideration. And then, you know, like I said, I want to hear what every, every commissioner has to say, and then we'll, you can also think about it for another month, because we come back, we'll have one more shot at this next month, when we then ultimately have to vote on it, we have to make a decision. Sound reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. So again, what we're faced with here is a situation where unlike most proposals, we have a shifting of the burden, and that is, it's not a developer coming in who has to show us that we, that he, or her, or it, has complied with the statutes, that's not the case here. What we have now is a state law that says, when it comes in under the affordable housing statute, the burden shifts to the commission to affirmatively show, should we deny a project, that the public interests in health and safety clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing. And as I discussed in the first, in the opening of this, that hearing on, on the text change, the need for affordable housing is pretty much shown by the fact that we've only got 5.7, 5.25 percent of our stock designated as affordable housing, so by definition, we have a need for affordable housing. Further, we would have to show that that public interest can't be protected by any reasonable changes to the, to the project. So it's a high burden, it's a, it's a, it's a high burden that we have, and there has to be sufficient evidence in the record for us to specifically point to something that's, that we can say is really jeopardizing health and safety, if we want to turn this thing down. We can't look at what ifs, we can't look at, there's a possibility that, I don't even think we can look at, there's a likelihood that, I think we have to have, would you agree counsel, that we have to have identifiable issues ventilated in the record that lead us to the conclusion that there is a palpable risk to public safety before we turn this thing down? Do you agree with everything I just said? Okay, good, because I don't know, no. All right, so that's where we are, and that's our charge. If we fail to do that, in other words, if we make a decision that goes against what the law says we have to do, we run the risk of an appeal, and the appeal winds up costing everybody money, and then what happens is, the belt of winds and everything just goes the way it's, you know, they had proposed in the first place. So my view is, is, is that, just from the point of view of what our responsibility is, we have to search the record, and we have to discuss everything that we've seen in the record, that we feel will, will achieve our burden if we decide to turn this project down. Failing to do that, we open ourselves up for an appeal, a tremendous amount of expense for the town, and a project that's going to come in and get, and approved by the court in any event. And with this specific application, we have had a lot of time to work with the developer in negotiating these, these regulations. So if we were to get appealed, my guess is, or not appealed, I mean, the developer doesn't even have to appeal, they've already got their site plan application in, and that will just roll over denial of ours anyway. So that's, that, those are the rules that we have to operate with. And so, you know, I, my, when I consider that, I feel that, you know, I saw a lot of people I felt real bad for, because these are people who are hurting, these are people who really feel that their worlds are coming to an end because of this project. I, I feel that and I sense it, and it's painful to watch, and, you know, but, but for the grace of God, we, you know, this could happen in our backyard easily. So I take, I took everything that everybody said very seriously, I felt that I needed to listen, and, and I was searching everybody's testimony for things I could, I could get from that testimony that would support a decision, in, you know, comporting with what the law said. Unfortunately, as tempted as I might be to, what's the word, grandstand for the, for the crowd and say, oh, you know, I'm here to protect you, you're, you know, the, the public here wants me as a, as a, as somebody who's got the public trust to help them and protect the town, I can't do that, you know, I can't do that legitimately in a case like this, that's not what we're here for, we're not here to protect the town, what we're here to do is allow the developer to develop that project, that property, in whatever way comports with the law. And we can limit it to some extent, but we have to keep, be very mindful about the statutes and the power that the statutes give the developer. So as I go through the record, and I went through my notes, I went through the minutes, and, you know, the things that, that stuck out in my mind were, I was worried about the fire stuff, that, that bothered me, I was worried that the fire marshal had a concern at one time about the fire trucks, that fire trucks being able to get, and that just scared the hell out of me, quite frankly. Picture some, a building burning and the fire engine is not being able to get there. I, after hearing all the testimony and relooking at everything, I, I don't see where that's the case. We know that the fire marshal is going to have final say on a lot of these things, at the time of permitting, I guess is what, kind of permitting anyway, so I, I, I don't think I can legitimately have that concern. Concern about the wastewater, well, actually, that's more of a site problem. I think other than the, other than that, I, I didn't see any health and safety things that jumped out at me. I also thought about, well, these are regulations that we are, are adopting townwide, and do we have to be concerned that they, that there can be other addresses where a project like this could go in, and what, how, how should that affect our decision? There are a handful of places, there's no doubt. But again, in talking with staff and in looking through, you know, my own understanding of what's going on in Seymour, I, I felt that when I looked at the statutes that we had negotiated with, with the developer, they were so close to the, to the regulations that we've, I said statute, I meant regulations, regulation that we already have in place, that I just didn't see there was a quantum difference there. And so I, I perceive, my, my view is, I don't perceive that there's a problem that could develop upon another site, I just don't see it, you know, because the way the regulations read right now, they're just not that different from the ones that are proposed for the regulations. So I no longer had a concern about that. In listening to all of the expert testimony that the applicant brought forth, we heard from people with lots of degrees and letter designations after their names, and we heard from our own staff in opposition, some agreement, some back and forth, and I listened to everybody, I had a little hard time at times reconciling the two. But, you know, these are experts, and their testimony in my mind is worth, unfortunately, and I don't mean this in a derogatory way, but more than a, a layperson standing up to the neighbor making comments. Not that I disbelieve anything the public said, I, I think that their, you know, that their, their comments were thoughtful, and certainly from the heart, but they didn't bring us any experts that would really help me weigh the, weigh the facts I'm hearing and come to a different conclusion. And the spots where I, I agree with the public, some of the things that troubled them, these were not areas that were health and safety related, for example, the, the drama that's going to, you know, be going on during the course of the development. I think if they're going to build, if they can build 60 units there, it's going to be the same amount of trauma as, as 90. So I can't see that as making a big difference in health and safety. The traffic thing bothered me a little bit, there's a lot of, there were a lot of people who were talking about the traffic. Most of the evidence was anecdotal, there, again, there was not a traffic expert. The expert that the applicant had, I, I asked him a few questions, I frankly didn't buy some of the, I don't think I bought some of the things he was saying, and, and what do I know, but I, it, it just, I thought there would be a far more, my opinion is that there would be a much bigger degradation in the traffic scenario, when you put 100, you know, 93 units, that's just a feeling I had. The data doesn't support that, so I have to decide whether, you know, how do I, how do I weigh that? And so I asked him a direct question, how many more accidents are there going to be with all these people now? And I think his answer was one or none, no more. And there was only one. So that kind of put everything into perspective for me, and I, you know, it's not like there are going to be people traveling 60 miles an hour there, so I, and it, it's going to be inconvenient, I get that, but I just couldn't, I could not come to the conclusion that there was a health and safety issue in, in any respect with, with this project. And for that reason, I'm inclined to approve it. I think it's, you know, my responsibility as a, as a, as a commission member and as a taxpayer to, to do that, and those are my thoughts. So having said all that, why don't we start with whoever would like to go first?
I might be as long-winded.
I apologize. Tough crowd. Sorry.
Or eloquent. I, I really didn't see anything that stood out to me as, as a glaring issue, otherwise I would have been dressed with, no opposition.
No, I agree with you said, I mean, there isn't much to go on, and I agree the traffic study guy, the, you know, and traffic study is a traffic study.
Do you have that same impression?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, but you know what I mean, they're just numbers, and no matter what, it's, it is what it is, you know what I mean? There's definitely not, there's not going to be enough concern there about that and then, and that. Usually in these type of hearings, that's, you know, everybody in the audience, that's the same scenario, you know, it's the frogs, it's the turtles, it's the traffic, it's the dust, and that's basically it. And like you said, you need to go way above and beyond that to be able to deny it. We're, we're getting close, I feel, you know, maybe just the colors of the buildings, maybe a little dialing them up a little bit more, and the drainage issues, so there's not a lot of issues we have to solve yet, just the wetlands is the biggest one I see for you, to start off with that. You know, affordable housing always gets a bad name right off the bat, you just mention that, people go nuts, and I'm glad you brought that up about the cost of what a rental is for the affordable housing, because a, a lot of people in that neighborhood that are renting are not paying that much for rent. You know, maybe close, but not that much for rent, you know? I pay a lot less for my mortgage, you know? But it, it is what it is, and, you know, and we're getting closer, just a few more hurdles to get over to, to make everybody happy to where it is. And, you know, I had a little concern about the text change and stuff, but Jimmy explained it to me in layman's terms, and it really made a lot more sense to me when he explained it to me at that point, and that's, that's about all I have to say.
The, um.
Go ahead.
Joe, what are your thoughts?
Well, my only concern was with the traffic and Spink Street and Smith Street, it's always been a problem over there, maybe it's a good time for the town to dissolve and fix things over there.
You, you really can't fix anything because the roads are too small, and there's still more property in that area that's going to get developed, developed, so it's never going to go away. That's always going to be the number one thing coming up, and that's why I say a traffic study to me means nothing.
That traffic study that they did is.
Well, he said he had it from 2015 and he just added the numbers to it. So the only thing I have concern about, the only thing I have concern about, it seemed like he didn't put any effort into putting it, this guy paid good money for it, okay? And the only thing he did is sat in his office and just, you know, put on a computer and put a couple more numbers.
But he did take new readings, though, I think in November he said.
I know, he added, he just added, he just added new numbers, he just added new numbers to it.
He said he sat down there, he wanted.
You guys are, I mean, I'm.
Well, he did some new studies, but it wasn't going on the other end, it wasn't approved for. Well, I don't think he did, because it didn't sound very good to me. My only concern, you know, my big concern, because I, I'm in the business kind of, is the, is the construction end of it, and I deal with a lot of irate people at that point, and there's nothing you're going to get around that, you know, they're just going to have to deal with it, it's progress, that's all it is.
Absolutely. They have to, people have to deal with it, but it's.
Yeah.
It's, it's nothing to do with the health or safety of the area. Like I said, the only big thing is with the traffic maybe or not, the water they got there to treat it, to console.
I, I've worked on many projects before, it's a dead end road, and I go in and we're going to add onto that road, and the people that live in it, the house, when they bought their house, they thought they were going to live on a dead end road forever. And they, you know, people that don't realize that, when I bought my house too, I didn't realize, you know, the schools, you know, at that point, you don't know everything about that.
Well, I'm dealing with it now, that's why I want to sell the house.
So, you know, I know, you know, I have to.
Get out of there before they start putting it in.
Well, correct, and just my opinion, these other people that are complaining should have sold the house if they.
Or they should have bought the property, put a dog park there.
Well, yeah.
They should sell them out before they start.
Well, no, it's too late now.
You know, one of the things I, I didn't, I didn't really want to say, but you're always in the back of my mind, is a lot of times these things hap, I mean, my experience in the past has been, a lot of times these things happen, and it's good. You know, the, the neighbor's house values go up, it can happen.
People can increase their rents, so.
All kinds of, all kinds of good things, but you know, it's not something that.
Yeah, it could solve that, leaving water in their basement, could solve that.
It's conceivable, we don't know, yeah, I mean, so, so Joe, you're, you're favorably just.
Well, I have several problems with the, or concerns anyways, with the proposed text. I don't know if I want to address that now, but I also have a concern, you know, we're looking down the barrel of this gun, saying we have to do this by then, or it's going to be appealed, that, because we're calling it an affordable housing project. I would like to know what the state defines as an affordable housing project, as only 30 percent, less than a third of these units are going to be affordable housing, 70 percent are commercial apartment building, what are we doing for the lay down, if there was one, if there was three affordable housing units in there, does that make it an affordable housing project? Is there some kind of limitation, is how many you get per?
Yeah, well, there's, there's maybe a slightly different way to look at this thing.
I'd prefer to get it from counsel from the town, please.
Just 30 percent, you're, I mean, this, this project doesn't qualify as an affordable housing project under statute, and, and we have to rule this out, that's something.
That's what I'm guessing.
You could certainly have a project that came in and was a hundred percent affordable, and what people don't do that, and towns actually lose themselves in an effort to, you know, get the numbers closer to 10 percent, but this project isn't a full housing project called under, under the statute. And, and any related text, so any regulation that's proposed that it was affordable housing first or second, so, so we have to rule this in that statute, I think, so it's a good explanation of what is happening.
Right. So I guess I'm just saying, my, because this whole thing is, we've got to get to 10 percent, we're only at five, we'd be better off with 100 percent, or whatever, you know? Then I have concerns in the text where it's only, it sunsets at 40 years, but then we're going to be back down again, you know, let's play the long game. I have some concerns in the text as to all the oversight that goes into these things, it's not with the development, but with the text that's written here. You know, who's going to put the percentage of this, who's going to look at it, is it the Seymour Housing Authority, who's going to make sure that the rates are this, who's going to make sure there's another 30 of them are being charged that? You know, who's going to make sure?
Let's run through that.
That the basins are being cleaned out, as the applicant said, you know, this could be sold, you know, the 40 years, you know, when, when does that start? I had some issues, you know, with if we're putting in retaining walls with no limit on height, you know, zone change, on the last page, you know, we're talking about applications, some of it just needs to be buttoned up, I think, you know, so that we're not looking at putting, you know, it just says affordable housing application seeking to change your zone, you know? Are we going to say, well, it's affordable and now, you know, because we get a backdoor where they change something to R18 or MF, or they get it like that, and then all of a sudden it swings into affordable? I'd just like to see a lot of these things buttoned up, you know, who's going to be responsible for all this oversight?
Well, the issue about the oversight is, is, was good one, and, and there was testimony from the applicant about the, the, the mechanisms there. Jim, do you remember, do you, I mean, I remember the gist of it, which was their annual review, reviews, their annual audits, in terms of the affordability element of it, is that what you were referring to, Jamie, the, how they qualify?
Yeah, the number of units, you know, the prices being charged, we start out with 1882. We start out with eighteen A two. And I was looking, if you went down to everything, eighteen A two A, you know, it says existing zoning designation. I would say at this time, I would like to see put in so something doesn't get changed down the road. And now this floating zone can go into that. If you go on to eighteen A five F, you know, we're talking about advertisements. Why wouldn't we just advertise in the same means that you advertise for your market rates? Why were we just setting, I think, minus this text stuff, you know? Not specific to the applicant. The, uh, we drop down, like in G, we drop down in G, I don't know if it's the state statute, you gotta use that wording, but we're just talking about the eighty percent or sixty percent of the median income of the state or the federal. Why don't we just put a number in there, you know?
Well, that's a good question for council. In terms of the writing the regulations, are they in any way not in compliance with what the statute, state statute requires?
The reason we can't put a number in is because the income level changes on a yearly basis because of standard, it's not a uniform map. But each year, the, the number that we're working on is a different number. So, it used to be that it went town by town, it went regional. So, you know, there's, there's a standard that eighty percent of the income and then there's sixty. So, so those numbers would calculate the price that you have to, the maps on price that you take to the house.
I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying, find some way to make it less cumbersome. Somebody can find out if they're entitled, you know, to, you know, if they qualify that for that affordable or whatever, you know? Just looking, kinda like our regulations, get off the track. I'd like to see it updated, thing of our regulations of all the text changes we've made, you know? Just to make things less cumbersome.
Would there be applications? Are there usually applications in the rental office? How do they, how do they qualify? What's the, I recall with the...
Usually you have, you know, you don't need an agency to do that. It can be if you, if I didn't see, have a, you're usually a housing authority to do it. And then you do have to open it up so that not, you know, there's a link to not somebody can come in and get a unit. It's supposed to be open so that people have a fair shot at getting it even if they're, you know, they don't have rights.
Right.
So, that's the whole idea, is for it to be transparent and there would be some opportunity for people to, to apply.
Do we have a housing authority or something that would do that? And they would handle that?
Well, you designate, you know, that, that could be in the regulation. But sometimes what happens is that party will change. You know, a private party can do it, you can have a, an organization do it, but the town can really sell. So, that, that is something that you designate, who would, who would follow up on that, especially with, you know, the rest of the unit. So, wanna make sure that somebody doesn't just have a, you know, a row here and then next year, their, their income goes up and then, you know, somebody who's...
They're renting it out and everything, yes, I talked about the oversight and all that.
So, that's, usually there's a yearly requirement that you, and if you look at the affordability plan of any affordable housing project, we'll see that it says, you know, this is the, this is gonna make those, you know, collect that data. And so, for instance, the units, whether they're affordable or not, have to do the same. So, you can't have, you know, some lovely units over here that are cheap and some really nice units over here that are more, that are the market rate units. So, what normally happens in a rental complex is that if a unit comes off affordable because the person who's living in it wants to stay in it but has an income that's too high, then the next unit becomes available, whether it's a market rate unit or a market rate comes in affordable so that that, you maintain that, that percentage within the complex. So, you know, I realize that it's, it does seem complicated and cumbersome, but it's just a process that you have to, to go through and it, you know, will be, will be damaged. So, I don't really have a problem with the regulation. I know we've got a couple of, you know, perhaps minor changes to it. But in terms of its, of its structure, I realize it's, it's, it is complex, it's a complex, you know, issue, but it's statute totally requiring. When you have the regulation, what you can do is then a developer comes in and they're more comfortable in the regulation that exists rather than sort of this pre-doing. So, you know, this is the time, you're gonna have some leverage to put in what things appropriate in the regulation. It comes through a regulation, it's not, you know, it goes through a regulation, it's not any other regulation. So, you know, now it's time to speak up, we need some, you know, some tweaks to it. But, so, happy to answer your question.
Do we have some specific new, do we have some specific regulations that we've drafted? Did they ever materialize?
Yeah, we have, we have talked, we have talked before. These are the regulations. You're looking, you're looking at, we're looking at what we're looking at.
Let's make sure we're, and you had, we had some changes that I think you guys had talked about.
There's some talk in progress, but if it happens and you're not, we'll become the regulations, you know, bothering you. Now it's time, as you're going, you're very concerned, you're right, but...
All right, let's, let's make sure we all have the most current proposed text amendment revised as dated December nine, twenty nineteen. Does everybody have one of these? Not speak up, because you'll need to look at this over the next month. And if there are any other questions, these contain... Are these different in any respect from what the applicant has...
Up to date, as things have been moving along and required, it's a little bit nice. I think you heard in testimony, a number of places, like change in my applicant or place in, not in the testimony, but staff, so, you know, it's not exactly what we're discussing.
Okay, maybe I'm, I'm, I apologize if I'm having a hard time understanding. I just wanna make sure that what we're looking at is something that the applicant's okay with.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Because if, because any changes we make and approve, I don't want the applicant to turn around and puke off. Wanna have some idea that we're, we're all going a bit...
Certainly, we hope, we hope that, you know, we're trying to get the best regulation.
That's a tech, that's a technical term.
Get out.
Right, okay.
So, in the, in the commission comments or questions, we ask if you, if you would have a specific item then to articulate on that.
Right, exactly.
It agrees with or doesn't agree with, or would suggest a different approach to, you know, the applicant taking that.
Right, so that's our homework for the next month. Look at these things, understand and digest them, come back prepared, you know, make any final...
Well, I would encourage you to move to your discussion because again, there are time plans in, so you don't, you don't impact yourself.
Well, you're, you mean, you're suggesting...
Next month will be like, you know, there's specific things, there are a lot of time to, and you've got to work on, you know?
I know...
I think it's just...
It's now. Yeah, you should really get it out.
We, we just, we just got these, they're not gonna be able to, nobody, I don't think anybody here is in a position to do...
I'm all set with them, I understand.
Yeah, I'm okay with them too, but Jamie needs...
Jamie's explaining them to me, I understand.
If there's specific questions, we can actually work on it. If there's a specific item.
Okay.
There's a lot of things, you might be taking one on one.
Joe, I understand them, I've explained some. He understands them?
Good.
He explains them.
I know, yes, and me too.
Maybe if you have some tweets that you're concerned about or some paragraph that you can refer to, it looks like you've read it in detail, maybe you can just let us know what goes on now to the extent you incorporate into next month. Eventually what will happen is if you give us some guidance, something really on us to go, and we look at regulations, staff, work signs, they consult, we help each other, and then we come up with what we hope will be, you're attached to a motion. And you say, okay, now we've edited this out, we've done our tweaks, here's the concerns that we have, and we come to you next month with something that is pretty close to, you know, finished, maybe really down to date compared with otherwise, you know? We're trying to give you something that, that you know of, have any questions about. So, it would be really helpful if you could tell us that now.
All right, well, I must go to...
Start on the first page and go down until...
Yeah, go eighteen A. I was just saying, and I don't know that we can assign, it's up to just want to assign some authority for, to oversee, you know, that all those parameters are being met, you know? That we've got thirty percent, that it's, you know, that type of, if it goes to the housing authority?
And the way that, and the way that would work is if a four billion housing project were approved, in that four billion plans for that project, somebody would be designated, whether it was somebody from the town or whether it's a private party, whether it's, you know, the management office of a big complex that has to come and give us everybody's tax return or information regarding that each year, that would be taken care of. So, you don't need to have that necessarily in the regulation, but let's put that down as a, as a portion, you know, designation. Can I just move on to anything else that you have to...
If we just drop down to the next paragraph, eighteen A three, I'd like to see existing zoning designation as of this date. You know what I mean?
The regulation would be effective as a first, if it was approved.
Right.
The town could always be, this, this commission has the ability to rezone.
Right.
By application. So, your commission, no one's just gonna change his own arbitrarily. So, if the town's like zoning, if the zoning commission were to make a change, they would be looking at all the uses that could get out of it.
So, it's gonna float into it, yeah? All right.
Well, if the town keeps evolving...
I got you. I was looking at eighteen A five F, E, I don't know. I was just looking at, you know, the advertisements. Why wouldn't, I just, again, I'm not saying it needs to be changed, my question is, why wouldn't you advertise one the same as the other?
Well, sometimes you want to do something like that.
Eighteen A six.
You wanna make sure that, you know, one of the, one of the things for having affordable housing, I don't think two years, you're supposed to expire, you're fired, you're living now, so it's just a portion of the time. So, sometimes you wanna give, you know, you're giving a little bit of preference to make sure that it gets well circulated within town. That would be the reason for, for making sure that that information will provide to the population.
I just was looking to ensure that it wasn't less advertised and, you know?
No, no, it's not intended to, it's intended to make sure that there's circulation going on.
And then I just went back to, you know, what's it, I under the same thing, and it just again goes back to who's gonna oversee compliance on stuff. And then there was, I didn't mark which page it was, but no limit on retaining walls, height limits on retaining walls?
See if it, no limit on the thing?
Jamie, sorry about the...
Oh, it's C, last page, detailed building structures, such as the construction, between the front and the middle, so you put a building, a support tank, or otherwise, if you're desperate to use, there's a maximum height for the tank. Technically, it's the same, but it's a hundred foot or eighteen years, but it's a hundred foot. Would someone put up a hundred foot column?
If it's deeper than a hundred foot cup? Well, I know, I'm just saying...
I mean, maximum height, so you're not, you're not limiting, you're not limiting someone to a four, six, eight if they need one. And again, this would be more appropriate to, with another site. I mean, they're not on their site plan out proposing, you know, it seems.
Right, I just...
But again, in the text, you wouldn't, you probably wouldn't leave something like the map because for example, there's a development right up the street, where the entrance comes in, they have retaining walls, they're beautiful, they're well maintained, they're landscape, and then the way the buildings are set up, there are some retaining walls that are thirty-five feet high.
They have fences on top?
They do have fences, and that's all, it's nothing else. But, you know, would be designed to retain walls, they're engineered, they're defined to retain, to do whatever the design is to do, retain, whether it's, you know, a slope or in some cases, it could be elevated building pad or a road or something like that, so...
Right, I understand.
I mean, again, if you're, you're trying to look into a building practice or a site planning practice, I mean, I don't think that's gonna depend on any of the zoning regulations to try and do certain...
I was looking at...
I think they intentionally left that vague for situations like behind Wendy's, where you have that rock face and they're building condos. If they put a retaining wall up there and you have a limit, then it could be argued that that retaining wall is illegal because it's so, so high up from, you know what I'm saying? So, I think they intentionally left it...
The same thing, someone could go around and say, okay, instead of having a twenty-foot wall, I'm gonna have five, four foot walls. Step back, step back. Retaining wall technically active independently, so I don't think your regulation should, should try to govern any site plan or building.
We, we could address that when the, came up. We could change that when, when the application came in, if you didn't like that, that's, that's...
I was just looking at a residential neighborhood that you button up, so now you got your backyard, you've got this thing, and now you've got some twenty-foot wall right at your back.
Yeah, but Jamie, you're missing, Jamie, you're missing the point. When that application came in and you didn't like the size of that wall, that's when you could change it. That's when you would address that problem, not right now.
I mean, a suggestion, you could actually just strike it out of there. It's not a there or it's not neither there or, then there isn't...
I don't think we need to do that.
Then we could just act on it when it came...
But again, the state or building codes and engineering practices just automatically take care of that.
Correct.
Well, I have, I have seen in other towns, retaining walls over a certain factor, then it's a structure, and so, they have to follow the guidelines and stuff. I haven't seen in other towns, we don't have that, we're...
I, I mean, personally, whether it's there or not, I don't really have any objection to your point, you know, say someone who's an engineer something, six, seven, two, twenty feet, sort of deal.
Whether we have it in there or not?
Well, behind, actually the wall, I think, we're referring to behind walls. That wall was there, up, that wall probably up, forty feet up.
But there's not much of a difference between the wall behind walls and the rock face behind Wendy's.
Correct.
What's the difference?
Correct.
To be a factor, as you want to...
Well, this may not be an appropriate concern, but what I was just thinking...
Decide whether...
No, no, on my part, I mean, I, you know, somebody, I was thinking, maybe we just strike it, take it out. You know, maybe that would work for you. The only, the only reason I'm hesitant to do that, and don't take this the wrong way, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm really not trying to help the developer at all, but it's got, they put it in there maybe for a reason. And what I, what I'm, what I think I want to avoid, because everything else looks fine to me, and I can't justify not doing this on, on any rational, you know, appropriate legal basis. Now, if I take that out, it could be something that's so important to the developer that we wanna catch an appeal at.
I don't see how.
Not on this project.
I don't see how either, I'm just bringing it up. Maybe I'm completely wrong. I would prefer just to leave it, and if it's not something we have, if you don't think we have to worry about it, then let's not worry about it, rather than taking it out. I mean, that may accomplish the same...
Well, what's the ultimate concern? What were the concern?
I don't see any concern, because we can address that problem as it comes up in the victim.
Concern that it's aesthetically not legal? Well, if that's a concern, well, it may be a beautiful wall, as well. Yeah, that one looks great, though, that one, that one doesn't develop it.
I'm saying, we have that option when the, when the application comes in, when they're looking at the...
Well, this limits you to not, for an affordable housing application, in ten years, if someone wants to put in a... Well, this limits you to not, for an affordable housing application, in ten years, if someone wants to put in a six-hundred-foot wall, there's specifically a lot of requirements. If you take it out, and then in ten years, you decide you want to have some limitations to that wall height, or at least additional permitting, special permitting over the wall of twelve feet, then the zoning code will, will help in administering it, rather than having a complete allowance within the area.
Who thought of that?
It can't, it can't hurt by taking it out, it certainly doesn't hurt the application if they're.
And why did they put it in there?
Because a lot of them.
All right, you, you see my point, I'm just, I'm not, I, I just, again, it doesn't seem to be, it, it seems a non-problem to me. Okay, so what I don't want to do is make an adjustment on a non-problem that for some reason creates a situation where we have, where we.
And, 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 my opinion, it wouldn't be a problem.
All right, we, you want us to move, let's move on, and what other, you have, what other? Well, that was, was that the end?
Just the end.
All right, um, anybody want to discuss anything further about this for now? If not, um, you know, we can, we can pick it up next month, right? Staff, you got anything more you want to say?
Well, I was just going to make, uh, make reference to what you had said, is that we have worked with the applicant on many of these issues, uh, I can't really speak to the, uh, issues of affordable housing and the different kinds of, the ways that PAT has done that, uh, that's more of a legal issue, um, but I did want to, uh, talk about how, um, that we talked about parking, but these are, these are just parking issues, just to kind of expand maybe, or even just.
Great.
Uh, pinpoint, that we did talk about, uh, parking numbers and locations, um, and, um, where they would be, you get parking numbers and locations, uh, we did talk about the concern for architectural elevations and what, what the actual, um, elevations look like, and, and we were assured at the time of the public hearing that the, uh, what you see on these beautiful pictures is what the town will get, uh, as part of the, uh, application. So this is, it's been really designated that the elevations are part of the application and represent what types of, of, uh, buildings are going to be made, um, yes, there is issues with the fire marshal, and you'll have to work that out and determine, with the ten percent and with the twelve percent, uh, this office went with, uh, with those larger numbers, uh, but we would defer, obviously, and that's what we said at the end of the day, we would defer to the fire marshal, and he, obviously, would, will work with the applicant during the time of the building application.
Well, the first, the first one you mentioned was probably more of a cycling thing, but this is in the reg, but the other, this is.
Yeah, I'm talking about, uh, yeah, things that you could, uh, if you want to complete, um, the, the application for the, uh, for the zoning amendment, um, we talked about stormwater, um, and that's going to be worked out with the engineers, um, about the post-construction and the design, management, and maintenance, which was very important, which was brought up in the public hearing, and the, and, um, that will be, that will be, uh, part of the, uh, part of the, uh, approval. And then the, uh, the criteria, the recommendations, and the requirements for, um, the earthquake, and, uh, and that is, uh, as part of the, uh, the, uh, the project, and, um, I think that's something that the, the commission is going to want to look at as well, go back through the testimony, understand how that process is going to work, and determine whether, um, those regulations feed up for that, um, but most of that would be site plan as well. I think you are right that the, uh, the town has worked very hard, uh, to create an ordinance with the, uh, or to, uh, massage an ordinance that has been brought to us, and I think that we've done a fairly good job in order to meet those expectations. As the PAT, myself, and, uh, and, uh, Brian, that we will be happy to answer questions during this month period, and try to work with the commission to, 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 to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a motion in the, in the filed, right, okay.
That's really nice, um, it's really just a, a discussion of those.
Okay, great, anything else on, yes?
Uh, just one thing that I overlooked, um, section seven point eight of our zoning regulation actually does have specific implications on the wall, uh, and that's probably why the regulation was written, with that excluded, but, um, I think what would be applicable in this is that fences and walls are limited to zoning district, they'll be a maximum of four feet height, um, within this front setback, and sixty, I don't remember if remaining a lot, so technically, the walls that have been designed, as I would consider this a recreational business, um, you're not required, uh, that, um.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, I thought that might be, I brought it up.
So your options are leave it in, or, or eliminate, or strike, or, you know, strike it, and then they could, uh, question on it. Or think about, or eliminate.
Oh, we're going to think about, you know, we'll think about. Okay, anything else from staff on the regulations? In that case, I think we can, you know, we've got what we need to look at, right?
I'll make a motion to table the text change.
Do we even need to table it? We can still make a motion.
Yeah, no, so, Jamie, you know.
Yeah, all right.
We'll table it, and we can hash out, we only have that little thing at the end, that's right.
So we, like, we're looking for, um, draft motions for your next meeting.
We have, we have to have them, yeah.
Right, okay, um, I'll table the text change, um, to two thirteen twenty twenty, at that point, we will have a final draft.
We'll have a motion in favor, a motion opposed.
But it sounds like, um, the hearing here is looking to approve, but, um, with some proof, so I would think that's what we're looking at.
Okay, that's what we'll do.
Yes.
Okay. Well, let's have a second, as long as we decide to get, then opposed, who's going to second? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, okay, we're going now, we'll move on to number twelve, site plan, twenty New Haven Road. And we're sensitive to the amount of time you've spent waiting, I apologize for the delay, but.
We just did reworking the text.
That's the same thing.
Same thing?
Yes. Thanks for your patience, appreciate it.
Site continues.
For record, my name's Jeff, I'm licensed landscaper with Mount Fifty-two Main Street, it's Seymour, Connecticut. I represent the applicant, Rooster Enterprises, or, uh, application, site plan, move up twenty New Haven Road. Our application is for a proposed garden center landscape supply yard, um, which will specialize in sales and delivery of garden and landscape items, and nursery stock, and products, we discussed this personally a couple of months ago. The proposed site is on the public side of New Haven Road, about two-point-one-eighth, base of parcel, vertical, 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 approximately seven-hundred-ten feet of furniture on New Haven Road, now, the retail trade of garden and landscape products is in a lot of use, and so, so the site plan through this is, uh, here. So the proposed site will be accessed by driveway, uh, on New Haven Road, a big driveway apron, both driveways very opposite from driveway to Webster Bank, looking at the top of the hill, um, access to site, in front of the building, there's going to be a proposed parking, it's a customer parking area, will open, eight cars, there's opposing, exposed, twenty-eight by thirty-six foot sales building, either side of the sales building, sort of, display areas, some out of plants, et cetera, uh, on the, uh, shade canopy, on either side of the parking area, it's like, you have a proposed nursery stock display area for fall trees, et cetera, uh, the driveway will continue to the rear parcel, where we have a parking area for, for employees, and it's going to be, area for, uh, bagged product storage, and on the back of the property, uh, material bins, for our product and stuff, et cetera. The dumpster is located to the rear parcel, it's screened with chipper higher over eighty, and it provides a parking area for the site for, for, et cetera, um, for, 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 um, start, post-building, we submitted plans, it's grown a little bit, some sort of last name, again, uh, building above, it's thirty-six B Y by twenty-eight feet, with six to fourteen across the front, on the first floor is going to be a seven-hundred-square-foot retail area, uh, building above the second story, and right now, it's a, a storage area. We are proposing that the building would be connected to the, uh, town sanitary sewer system, we received conditional approval from the, uh, N D P C A, uh, and it's also being, uh, cleared out of the water.
Any questions from you? And you're asking us specifically, what are we doing here tonight?
Site change.
Guys, do you have comments, staff?
All right, uh, Brian. So this originally was presented, I did some comments, um, they did submit provisions last week, Jesse did actually reach out to him a little bit ago, and I am sort of, kind of, backwards, uh, for the most part, um, most of my comments have been, uh, addressed, I, I have, um, one disagreement with him, and then maybe one coming out, one other thing, um, there, there is a condition in the, in the regulations that says that, um, there should be no storage inventory places in the front half of the front yard. I take that to mean the, with, the depth of the front yard, so if you have a thirty-foot front yard, fifteen feet of it should not be used for, um, the display bin reporting, um, and I don't want to keep with Jesse, but his, his interpretation of it is that, um, they're only using half of the lot frontage, and, and they are putting, um, display, or the proposing, display areas right up against the property, and I disagree with that, I think it could be, um, half the depth of the front yard. The only other, uh, item I wanted to point out is that the, um, the landscaping, this is a site plan application, aesthetics should be considered, um, what this looks like from, versus seven should be considered, um, and the, the site plan is, is very vague in the landscape treatments, um, in the aesthetics, uh, that are being, are posed, um, they, they have some minor comments about for, and some landscaping, and for one thing, I think, understanding that the fence is, sorry, um, is called, is proposed wooden wire effect, which is going, uh, pro, 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 I don't know, sorry, I don't know, offensive, just, just considerable.
May I ask you, quick, quick question, uh, the regulation about half, is, uh, your interpretation is that everything should be behind at least fifteen feet back?
Well, uh, not in the front yard, it's, uh, the town had Jesse, it's fifty.
All right, and the reg is thirty, so it's half?
No, the, the reg is fifty.
Fifty, okay. All right, so, so.
By interpretation, I agree with Brian.
Okay, are there other spots in town that we've interpreted this in the past?
There's other spots in town that took, that are in violation of, of the interpretation.
Has anybody done it this way? I mean, it seems to me like.
The interpretation of what I have is what I have, is the same.
Because it seems to me like it makes sense to keep everything half the way.
Yeah, I, I didn't agree with you.
No, you didn't.
No, no, not.
Because the, the regulation specifically says, display merchandise offered for retail sales is allowed to occupy up to one-half of the front yard of any parcels or facilities.
Yeah, but we talked about.
Allowed to occupy up to one-half.
Yeah, could you read the reg, can you read the reg?
No, I, I said it was meant, the half was like, if you have fifty, if you can, you could put, display items up to one-half.
Well, let's just read the reg, stop, just read the reg for a second.
There's two regs that need to be considered, okay, so, from one that he just said, and that is, the display of merchandise offered for retail sales allowed to occupy up to one-half of the front yard of any parcels or facilities.
Fine, that sounds like square footage.
Well, no.
There's one half, it doesn't say setback.
Well, it says one half.
Then you go to the definition of yard, and in the definition of yard, it says the front yard is the yard between the street line and the lot width measurement line, I think that's pretty clear, that that's between the front line and the back line, and the setback line, a lot width measurement line is taken at the front setback, that's my, that's my interpretation.
Boy, I can't see how you look at it any other way without torturing the.
You interpret your own regulations. Well, that's, that makes sense, and I see how he did it, because he went this way instead of this way.
Is there any chance to pull it within what we got to do, because I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to torture the, the language and make it work here for you.
We can certainly pull it back to, um, twenty-five feet, you know, uh, I, I thought when I spoke to him that we were on the same thing, because the regulations said, I expect the one-half to be seventy-five.
You know, being a nursery, though, twenty-five feet isn't a lot of space for, so.
Um, what's in there, a segment twenty-five feet, it's twenty-five feet.
Just, just stock plants. I mean, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're putting trees.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if, if, is your client available to, to?
Oh, yeah.
Is that gonna, if, do you want to come up and talk to us?
And we could do it, I think, that's, uh, like you say, it's a really narrow lot, and we said, uh, based on the street to the fences, it's, it's, that's all state property, and then to leave the mother, that, you know, building, a lot, you know, closes in, on either end.
You, you see our conundrum here, we, it's kind of torturing the language, and we're not all-powerful, we can't just make executive. So you're saying then that it would work if we, what, conditioned the approval, that we, how would we do that?
Well, yeah, you make that, that would change it.
But he has option, he has another option, I don't.
What's that? He knows? Pardon me?
Oh, variance, yeah. You can seek a variance for that, right? Yeah. I'm just saying, I think we are, we're on the same paragraph, but I, I remember the conversation.
Yeah, I, I.
It's like, my senior moments are coming faster and faster, but I, I interpreted, because I remember always being there with Tony down at the board, a few years ago, and I think that's what we're talking about, so, I definitely knew what he was doing, so I was agreeing, I said, oh, I know what you're doing, but I'm prepared to, to, after.
So he'd have to get a variance before he came back to us?
No, no. It's an avenue for him. Correct, well, upon, upon a condition, so whether he follows the guidelines.
We'll just revise the plan to pull the, uh, display area back, to, 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 behind, uh.
Right, right. Meanwhile.
I think you should make a condition.
Good, right, that's not, that's not.
I don't think they're going to want to do that, I think.
And if you're willing to go that route, and then apply for a variance, and you're happy with, however that works out for you, that, that will work for me, and then at least you can get your project going. Correct.
Okay.
Correct, right, you want to be able, spring, you want to be able to go in for spring, okay, is there anything else from?
Brian, what other, what other?
Those two points that I, that I.
We, we just took care of the first one, what was the second one?
Aesthetics, so, so this is a site plan, so landscaping, the, what the, the property's going to look like is, is definitely something that you've heard, you, in my, I'm not saying that it, it's not going to look good or bad, I'm just saying it's very.
What are the, the schedule now, is it making schedule now?
Um, obviously, on either side of the display areas, there, the nursery stock, um, between the parking area and the, uh, street line, just the property line, you have a landscape that, which we call a flowering annual, turn, and shrug, it's not specific because, as a landscaper and garden supply center, the stock in there is going to rotate, so there's constantly color, and that everything.
It could be a, so it would be a seasonal planting.
A seasonal planting, or, in that part.
How can that not be attractive?
The, uh, the painting pot, nothing along.
Compared to what's there? Compared to what's there?
Good point.
The house itself will look better.
So Brian, that's it, right? And you put this in front of me for what specific reason?
That's just...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have a little ones. We have a little ones. You're the main man, you get the big one.
All right, so...
I'd like to propose a motion to approve.
Guys, can we pay attention?
Okay, so I'm saying that I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan for this. Bring that sightline back now. For display area back now. And then he may go for a variance at that point.
Well, wait, we're approving it subject to him...
Well, he's going to move it back. He's going to move that...
To the 25 foot spot.
The 25 foot to follow regulations.
Okay.
Okay?
And if he wants to, otherwise, he's going to seek the variance.
Meanwhile, he can seek the variance.
What were you going to say?
I think with these changes and the need for landscaping, my opinion would be to ask the applicant for an extension to make this decision. It's a 65 day, we've received a initial number, so you're at, you're at the point right now that you should make a decision.
65 is up after tonight?
I would think so, yeah. We will be up sometime, probably next week sometime.
Right, but I think...
Correct.
But...
Well, what was your concern?
Well, you had a concern.
My concern is, my concern, as I've been looking at this project since the last, and I haven't talked to Jesse about this when I called up, I'm only here a couple days a week, and that's one of the drawbacks of that. Is that I, I would like for them to identify, at least the applicant to identify additional landscaping along the side of 367, possible additional fencing, as well as I'm concerned about the number and types of equipment, trailers, and vehicles that are going to be stored here overnight. That, concerned about what would be normally associated with a garden center and what would not be associated. And I would like for the applicant to identify those vehicles, equipment, and trailers that will be, that will be parked here on site overnight and provide a detail of that where they would be, where they would be parked.
And we can enforce that with a sight plan.
I thought, he brought that up at the last meeting, that there was going to be a loader, there was going to be a loader for loading out the material.
All right, but I see, I hear what you're saying.
But I'd like to have that formalized. We just received this, this new set of plans this week.
And the woven fence, the fence that goes, that boards the front.
What's a woven fence?
The woven wire fence is a tailing fence. It's a rubber coated tailing fence. Tailing fence, historically, it's a brand name, as I call it, a patient has to be a bill of course, bill of course of brand. Tailing, historically, was a brand. The actual type of fence is a tailing fence, because they've woven that fence.
Correct, right. Right. Right, no, no, I understand that.
And he has responded to many of our potentialists that we have given, but I haven't been able to review them, the secondary plans in order to determine whether there was an additional...
There is no parking there for any other vehicles.
Well, I mean, we call out an equivalent parking area, in fact, as you said, there's going to be loaders, there's going to be trucks on the site to deliver the product.
I'm concerned more about the park, over the park.
And you'll want to see that on a revised site.
And I would like to see that on a revised site.
I kind of have a hard time going against...
Well, I mean, I, I understand what he's saying, but what he's going to have there, he already has the area to park it there. So what he's going to park there, if it meets, if it fits in that area where he's parking, he should be allowed to put what he wants there. It's going to be...
I think the advantage to us is that we know what it's going to be, we know what we approved, and then we have the ability to enforce that which we've approved, and we don't have to worry about.
So you're saying you're going to put a restriction on what type of vehicles he could park there?
No, he's going to put it on himself.
Yeah, they're going to self-restrict themselves. You're going to approve it.
Well, not necessarily, not necessarily. Yeah.
Well, I think you're talking about...
He would say he buys a bigger pickup truck.
My concerns are, what is necessary for an operation of this type?
Well, I think if it goes from...
I understand, I understand what's necessary for an operation of this type.
And whether it would be misuse for other activities.
Okay.
Seems reasonable to me. I mean, for example, if the difference between a straight truck and a tractor-trailer...
I see what he's saying, because he could still come and approve that, and then two years down the road, park whatever he likes there.
I don't.
I, well, I know. But things, just like Jimmy said, there's other places in town that don't meet the setback.
But we wouldn't catch heat as a board for not having watched for that in the first place tonight. That's, that's really, I think, the issue, correct?
That's right.
How do you feel about, I know how you feel about that, but do you understand...
I understand his concern, but it's a nice project, the development's been sitting there for a while. Your biggest concern I had was the woven fence. What the fence is going to look like in the front would be, and why more of a concern than what's going to be parked there. Yeah, any other joke, any?
Well, his vehicles, whatever he's going to need for the job to do over there, it's going to be parked there for loading and for delivering.
Well, you're looking at, listen, you could start off with a mason dump, and like he says, two years down the road, you could get a six-wheel dump truck, because he, his business grew and he needs a bigger truck to deliver stuff. I don't see him having a tri-op still in there, although he could.
I, I think that, now, let's keep that current, but I think that the potential issue would be, and this is being applied for a sight plan for a landscaped yard, material, detail operation.
It's to do, yeah.
And it could turn into a storage yard or construction yard, which is not what this is being applied for.
Oh, is that right?
So, that's what, that's my interpretation of what we're doing.
So, could we put a restriction on it tonight, that he can't have construction equipment other than what is necessary? Well, no, no, other than what is necessary for this business?
I don't see why not. I, I would say that would be...
Would that word okay for you? So if he worded that way, vehicles parked on site are only, only necessary for the, this business?
He's asking for the applicant to actually supply the information to him for...
To be more, yeah, I got it. Right, okay.
Asking grant and that's an extension. So the whole thing can be brought together.
Okay. So, so...
Later on...
Right, right, so we're, we're going to... So, ask for an extension.
Well, my, my question is, if they say we specify certain pieces of equipment per day, six months down the road, you buy a different piece of equipment. Just come back for sight plan approval at the end again?
No, because it has...
Maybe the worker out here is, is you restrict overnight parking to the specific number of axes to a vehicle. You know, like you can't have any eight-wheel or a six-wheel, like a, you know?
Well, the...
A vehicle doesn't have wheels. Cracks.
Cracks.
I think, I think the payloader is always going to be a payloader.
Correct.
Dump truck's always going to be a dump truck.
Right. Right, yeah.
So is it one dump truck, is it two dump trucks, is it one payloader, is it four excavators?
Is it four dump trucks? I mean, I don't, well, I see what you're saying, it's going to turn into a construction...
So it doesn't turn into 14 excavators, 14...
Right, 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 right. Well, that's what I'm saying, it has to be specific for the business, you know what I mean? If it's going out for hire, if you have a truck here and it's going out for hire for somebody else, that's not permitted.
Right, but they, they are representing that they will have a dump truck, I think.
Yeah.
And that will make...
Deliveries, deliveries, bringing in, bringing in material, bringing in material for him and delivering material out of there to other jobs.
Yeah, just a little history back, this, this actual, like I said, I have no opinion on what they're presenting, that's something that I've known for a long time. The actual designation of landscaped materials for sale, which recently added to the senior zoning regulations, wasn't allowed in that zone.
Right.
Because it came about at one of these things that brought that...
Well, at one point, the, you can run a landscaping business. Landscaping business is allowed to be ran in this zone.
Right, but the materials and sales, like this, retail yard was not. That was recently added to the zoning.
Right.
And that was filed by, again, by insiders who are coming along.
Right.
You know, so you look and you say, well, do they exist? Well, we have one that exists on South Main Street, that's, that's been placed in time. They've also resold something simply, maybe not with a plant or a concrete building, but... So, you know, there's some considerations to that, so just something that's, that hasn't been around in that zone for time anymore, something that was added by an activity.
Gotcha.
And they're in 2014.
All right, so go for an extension, maybe we could see the type of fence that's going to be in the front? Just a tailing fence, is it going to be green one or just a tailing fence? It's black, okay, that's fine, no, that's fine, okay, that's fine. Okay. Now...
Consult the client if they want to.
And maybe apply for his variance? Okay?
Well, it might be easier just to...
Well, we're taking, no, we're going to take...
We can do the, we can get the approval with, with moving back to 25 feet back to the street line with that approval. Which is very difficult to get off the ground. We want to go, future go prepared, is to occupy more yard.
Correct, you can, right, right, you can, you can do your variance every time, but the problem that we seem to be having is the, there you go. It's the part, it's the, it's the type of vehicles and the amount of vehicles that are going to be allowed to park there overnight.
Correct, that's the main concern.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I can put my timeline back quite a bit, and season's going to start again tomorrow. And to, to get another month, you know, going to February, and then the weather could have turned, you know, worship is now, and now it's going to be done. I'm trying to understand the concern between, you know, the vehicles, you know, not bringing in somebody else's vehicle to park there, you know, that would be... My deep, and when I need to bring that up, you know, that's it.
All right, so where are we? What can we do, what, what can, what language can we come up with tonight?
You need an extension in order to...
We can't, okay.
If he doesn't want to give an extension, then you have to make a decision.
Unless there's language that we can...
You can make an approval with a condition that would be set forth afterwards that will apply.
You think?
Well, no, because conditional only, it'll be worked out after, like engineering.
I don't like doing that.
I don't know why the applicant would want that, but you need something, you need something. If you just asked the question.
Well, the prob, what's the...
I'm just saying, concerns are landscaping, fencing, the storage of vehicles, and the conditions on that, whether they're going to be, and they're going to be storing vehicles.
Well, that seems to be what we're having the trouble coming up with language for.
Right, we need to have the right language.
I want the applicant to provide the information, you know, to do this for me.
Correct.
You want to run something by me?
Well, the fence...
We've talked about the, right now we're proposing a woven wire fence from the front. The black vinyl, might change the view right now, for proposing black vinyl.
How do you feel about that?
The black vinyl fence.
I don't have any doubt about it. I see something that you guys need to consider, what it's going to look like.
Well, you, you had that concern, and he just told you it was vague, and he just told you what it's going to be.
Very vague.
Yeah.
I'm glad that they pointed out that black vinyl fence, and now it's up to me to decide.
You can have opinions, it's, we're fine with that. All right, so that's that, now how about...
The landscaping, you should provide the whole frontage of the parking area, providing the landscape that gives flower, turn, and also fruits, and appropriate. If, if you want something else, if...
Well, I think we're okay with it.
If, if you bring that, the planting area on the, it's not how it area, it's back, you can plant in that area, correct?
Yes, because of that 25.
Do you meet the, well, obviously, no.
I thought...
Just because in the, also in regulations, there's no specific guideline to landscaping in the regulation, so, you know...
Well, that's what I'm saying, you meet that criteria, yeah.
What's the criteria you're looking for here? Because there is no criteria in the regulation.
Well, I think if we have approval with three conditions, one is you move it to the 25 line, the second, we use, you specify that there's a black vinyl fence, and the third thing is you specify what?
The number, the number and types of vehicles.
The number and types of vehicles. What's the number and types of vehicles? Let's get this done.
A track payloader?
They can always come back for a variance if something changes, right?
Yeah, you can put...
It sounds like the media landscaping, because it sounds to me, from gathering here, it's a very high visibility location.
It is.
I mean, there's going to be so many plants there, I think it's going to drown out any kind of landscaping that's there, because that's what you're going to see, is it, the stock, you know?
Well, I think there's a difference between a planted bed and a row of potted plants per day.
Correct. Right.
Home depot, first of all.
I think that parking lot.
There you go, that's what it's going to look like.
I don't think that's...
Correct, I mean, I'm not saying that is landscaping, but that's what, that's a good idea, you know, analogy, that's what it's going to look, that'll look like.
Well, the season is going to end eventually.
Yeah.
Fall, into winter, but the site is going to stay throughout the whole year.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And that's what we're concerned about.
Right, gotcha.
What is the site going to look like when it's not being used as a...
Right, what, what, what are going to, what's going to stay in winter over, what's going to winter over?
And the ground is frozen, and nobody's putting any mulch, nobody's using any rock, and nobody's doing anything, what's the site going to look like?
Well, we'll have winter stock, we'll have some winter stock that will winter over, but what's it going to look like? Gotcha.
And this is at our gateway.
Okay.
One of the gateways of the town.
Correct, correct.
Well, I think that the site plan should be...
A little more detailed.
A little more detailed.
So, like Pat said, we have... Yeah, I think, I think, I think Brian coined that. I think Brian coined that.
And I am concerned, I, I, I don't know the applicant from, from Adam, but I am concerned over the years that I've seen these yards...
Turn into...
Turn into contracted yards with trailers and trucks and payloaders and water trucks, and all the things that go along in an construction business, and then we have something different than what we... And I say, no offense to the applicant, no offense to the...
No, exactly the same.
And I wish that I was here more, in order to interact with them, but I am concerned with that, and that's going to be basic at the end of the day.
Gotcha.
It's just because the land is open and it's a good place to park places.
I agree.
So, now, well, we have to, we have to, you have to go for an extension?
We, if they can grant us an extension, or we can vote.
Well, then obviously, we're going to table it.
Well, we have to decide whether you want to, you can get an extension. I understand, you have a site plan that doesn't comply with your zoning regulations.
Right. Okay.
That's what I said, he can either give us an exception, or we can vote on it.
Right, so...
Give us an extension, or we can vote on it now.
Part where you're saying that the site plan doesn't conform is because of, why, we have the front half of the front yard.
The front half of your front yard is being replaced.
So we, so he said we could take care of that, we need that 25 feet.
But there's also other things, we have a site plan that is committed to the permission which you want to vote, so, it's up to you, you can let them vote.
Well, I thought when we asked, is that acceptable, when I said yes, that we have that 25 feet.
But that's not the only thing that's acceptable, though.
The other is, is the.
I can understand what else things can form, I understand that you wanna see more planting too, on the bed.
I would say that that's the only, I, okay, um, I would say that that's the only item that I can make like that, is not conforming to the.
Well, what is, what are you saying?
But that doesn't mean you don't have a purview.
That doesn't mean we can't make a vote that you may not wanna.
What he's saying is if you don't grant the extension, we're forced to vote on the site plan that doesn't conform.
Correct.
Without the extension, we have to vote on the site plan that you've presented, and that site plan is not conforming.
So then, then what would happen next month, like start all over again?
No, we would just have a revised site plan that would address.
And you have, and you have.
And a landscaping plan and, and the parking scheme, yeah.
Three trucks.
Correct.
Two skids deer, I mean, there's gonna be equipment here, it's a, it's not gonna be, you know, one machine that can take care of.
Of course, and, and that would be something that, that they provide.
So. So, the right thing would be to do, whether you own them or not, is to map, you know, put the maximum amount of limit of machines that you need to run this operation.
To say, I won't let see one payloader, I won't let see two dump trucks, something like that, put maximum, so we know what your limits are.
So is there a limit that you guys have on that? If I come back and say, I don't have ten dump trucks here, and we're only on five.
Well, you can show that they fit, if they fit in your construction, your parking area there, where your equipment can go, like it says, whether you own two or three of them. Say I'm gonna have a track payloader and a rubber tire payloader, a, a six wheeler, a ten wheeler, and a triaxle, or whatever vehicles you need.
So the parking area for the.
Construction equipment.
Is acceptable, you just wanna know what's gonna be in that.
Correct, and that you, right, and you don't.
There's not a restriction on what is gonna be in there, just that it fits in that area.
Yeah. Like you don't wanna be parking an oil, correct, and you don't wanna be like parking an oil truck or something there, you know.
Or parking where plants were during the spring, now we have three trailers there.
Right, yeah, in the, in the area, in the front area, when you, during the winter time, when you don't have anything there, you're not parking other vehicles there. Because it will be an eyesore at the location that he's talking about, that, that's gonna be an eye. Would he be able, would he be able to put that information in now?
Yeah, we can, we can move on and come.
Can we give him five minutes to put that information in?
Yeah, we'll move on. Alright, we'll take it, we'll, we'll just move on, you guys go aside, yeah.
We'll take a, we'll, we'll take a five minute session.
Yeah, you guys go talk, we'll move to the next item, when you come back in, we'll.
Yeah, we'll finish up, yeah.
Oh, election of off.
Election of officers. Alright, first off, we have three people we need, we also need to do staff, authorize Jim, Mike, and Bill as, um, as CEO, you have CEO powers, right? Alright, so, we just make a motion for that and approve that, so what, what specifically do you need us?
Your commission, your commission has the authority to designate.
Does, so we're designating. So, we, which we did last year, so we'll just, we're re-designating Mike, Jim.
So I'm gonna make the motion to elect Joe Zio as commissioner.
Well, let's first do the, let's first do the, uh, thank you, Bill, let's first do the, uh, let's do the staff. So we're gonna redesignate Mike, Jim, and Bill as, to have zoning enforcement.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'm not.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we can move on to officers.
Okay, I'll make a motion to elect Joe Zio as the commissioner.
Chairman.
Chairman, true, true, yeah.
Where are you, commissioner?
I don't care.
Sure. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to nominate Tom as secretary, secretary, right, that's vice chair.
Vice chair.
I second.
Um, okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried, alright, so we're done with that, do we have any correspondence? Pardon me?
You go secretary, that's gonna decide where my are, so I'm gonna be secretary.
I thought the vice, so the vice chairman can't sign? Alright, so let's make one more, let's make one more motion then for a secretary, and I, I'll nominate Tom as secretary.
I just took vice chair, I don't think I can do both.
Can't be both?
No, I was gonna, I was gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to elect Joe, you know, I can't make Joe, I don't wanna, I was like.
He says, Pat says she can be two.
I can be two?
That's what I thought.
Oh, okay.
So I nominate Tom to be secretary as well.
We'll see.
Any, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried, finally.
Now you really gotta show.
Now you got all the hard work, right, are any correspondents? Uh, we'll give him a minute to come back and adjourn. Oh, oh, I was kinda, I was kinda wondering, but I figured you knew what you were. I apologize, I should've made it clear, that's my, it's my fault, I apologize.
I'm gonna tell you were bored with life, so you sat in here.
That was my fault, I apologize.
It's even colder outside now. The oranges are freezing. He's wondering what we were talking about, you know what I was talking about, you're from Florida, you gotta go out and spray the fields. He looks like you're walking.
Joe, I understand his concerns about the parking, it's a, it's a big point.
I just wish we could've done it this way.
Well, no, I think we still can, he comes back and saying, I'm only gonna have this, this, and this there, and then put it in, and that's it. I don't care what he wants, I mean, I do care, I mean, I do care.
Yeah.
But what I'm gonna do is get the project going, but he was absolutely glad he brought that up, because it could turn into something. So, the only way he thinks that he can park there is gonna be where he's sitting now, okay, and I told him, listen, so you can only fit so many vehicles there, okay? So we could park a loader in a pit, you know, he could park a.
How do we know where he's designated?
It's right there, it's right here.
So it's already designated, I saw. Okay. Alright, I, I, I agree with you.
Because it's a nice building, and it's gonna look nice there, and he's, he's gotta get it up and building, it's gonna sit forever, and it's only, so we, just, so we just better have to put a heavy restriction on that, so, you know. Do that now, that gives building authority, that when something gets parked there, it's gotta go, okay?
What if he comes back and says it's okay to go to next month, and we just let it go?
Yeah, we, well, then, no, then, yeah, he's not gonna do that, he's not, he's not, absolutely not, absolutely not, because what I said made sense, so, like it says, we have the power, like, I'm glad what he said, so if we read it in there, that way, that's fine. The, the fence and the fence is a fence, the landscaping is landscaping, it's not a state, you know what I mean, if they bring that, if they don't, there is a certain percentage that he has to do for.
Okay, we're back on, um, site plan twenty, you hear the road.
Alright, so as far as, uh, any vehicles that would be parked there would be only by the applicant, that could be annual, fly off there. As far as the equipment list, we were talking about three trucks and trailers, trucks that would be up to six wheelers, because that's the biggest vehicle that we have, two loaders, two skids deer, an excavator, and a what?
And a backhoe.
And a backhoe. Of the equipment, it is, and equipment would fit within the areas, just made on the plan, obviously, the, the revision following the display area, uh, that way, like you can property line, it's essentially discussed, so, for what my plan. If you have the landscape in front, you know, if you provide some additional fencing behind the fence, that would go out with property line, it's important that you do.
It, it really stinks, you can't do anything in front of that, you know, because it's such a big upset, you know.
And the state owns, you know, the edge of the road, back to the property lines, under forty feet.
Yeah.
Not like, this is all.
It's way back.
Forty feet, that's, you know, that's, 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 in the road, in the road. Forty feet, the, the property line, and then the front step back, and a few more, so it's not gonna be.
Can you do any plantings on the driveway access side, can you do any type of planting on the driveway access coming in on your side?
That would be up to state and candidate approval, and they usually.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, you have to go through, through for that.
Well, we have to go to state and candidate for approval for the drainage connection, through a connection with water, and then we can stay right.
Okay. Can you just throw that in there, and they could just say no, right, the worst they could do, they could, that'd affect your other.
I mean, they, we could, we could.
Just try it anyway, I mean, you know.
Try it, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, cause I, I can agree with, with Brian, with Brian saying, just dress it up a little bit, and cause it is such a forty foot access coming in.
Yeah.
If you had a five foot bed on either side, you know, whatever.
Yeah, and we can't, one, we can't gloss it, we can't impair the site on.
Right. Right.
So, I mean, perhaps they would let us do something small.
In the corner.
In this area, at the access point, again, that's, I can't.
Well, that's fine, I mean, just, yeah, I'm just saying, you know, it's right.
Alright, so, we're, we're inclined, we're inclined to approve this with specific conditions, rather than go another month.
Sure.
What we're gonna do is, we're gonna outline them, I'm gonna ask you for the record to make it very clear, when you say the map, exactly where you're talking about, in terms of where the vehicles are gonna be. And we're gonna give, we're gonna list the vehicles, and if we do that.
Are you okay with that?
I'm hoping that we'll get, is, okay?
If they're only owned by him, list of the vehicles that he could park there.
We'll have a list, and, uh.
Right.
You can place that on the plan.
Alright, so let's start, let's start verbalizing the motion then.
I'll make a motion. Oh, you were talking.
I'll make a motion to approve this site plan conditional on three things, um, moving the plant to retail sale area back twenty five feet. Um, number two, install more plantings along frontage where retail was located, and number three, overnight parking vehicles must fit in designated parking in rear, and must conform to the list that the plan has provided.
Read the list.
Okay, and I, and I think we need to also add some specifics for the record, because, as to exactly where he's referring to on the plan.
Alright, the vehicle parking area is displayed on the plan, and it is in the southeast of the corner of the park, it's approximately. Side, approximately eighty feet by eighty feet, located approximately ninety feet back from the.
Okay, and it's outlined in, with crosshatching on you?
It's, it's outlined, uh, there's one fifty four, about six boxes.
Does that sound good? Alright, and did we specify which vehicle, what?
He, he has the list, let him read.
He's gonna provide.
What's the list?
Three trucks with trailers, um, what kind of trucks? Could be up to six wheelers.
Up to six wheelers, not triaxle.
Three six wheeler dump trucks with trailers.
Yeah, uh, two loaders, two skids deer, an excavator, and a back forty feet. So we only had, uh, three trucks with trailers, two loaders, one back of, two skids deer.
I assume you're, you're, you can fit it in that area.
Well, I, that's why I was counting my.
And that's why we identified it for the record.
I didn't know about that.
Well, it's eighty feet long, so he can fit the three trucks, okay, because it's eighty foot, so he can fit the three trucks, he could put two loaders who will fit in one spot, because they're gonna be small loaders, he's not, skid steers. He could, he could put three, he could put three of them in one of those parking spots, so the vehicles that he's talking, will fit there. The, the back on, the only thing, like you just said, is the excavator, cause the excavator really doesn't pertain.
Two hundred or eight hundred?
Well, it doesn't pertain to this business, really, I mean, you're not really gonna be using this excavator on the site, that's your only concern.
I just, my only concern is it gonna fit in that little area.
Well, like I said, it, well.
Sort of has to.
Well, if he has a main excavator.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's, the three trucks, yeah, he could put them, he could leave it on trailer, he could leave the excavator on the trailer.
It's not worth confining it to that area.
Correct, I see.
Confining that area is shown as, you have it lit, you have.
Yeah, he has it listed.
This is a postsite, it's sort of, it's built according to that.
Yeah, yeah, so just with the excavator, read the list again.
All to be located within.
Within that, correct, correct, in the, in the, this media.
And it's, it's a nightmare, that, that's a long motion, we've gotta make sure that we.
What is, okay.
You've got that in the record though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, what, what do you have for the vehicles then?
Oh, I was.
Well, she'll, she'll.
Oh, okay.
Pat, I, we've identified the, the area well enough, I think.
If you're limiting it to the area and you're limiting the number and type.
Correct, and just read the list one more time of the vehicles.
Three trucks with trailers.
Six wheel.
Trucks that would be up to six wheelers, two loaders, two skids deer, and an excavator and that.
There you go.
Okay, alright, I think, I think we've identified.
Yeah, that, yep.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, did you?
Oh, uh, well, the, the.
The fences on the.
The fences on the, ready?
And the black vinyl.
Oh.
Black vinyl.
And a, and a, yes, no, we didn't, okay, correct.
Add that to the motion.
And, and.
The other thing that I was only word wise, that you were saying, moving the retail back forty five, moving the storage back forty five, the vehicle is still staying where it is.
Correct.
The plant's available for retail.
The storage, nursery stock storage area, that's, that's not retail as far as on the plan, whereas the yellow is the retail.
The, the, of the yellow.
Yeah, no, we're not, the retail is fine, it's just the storage, your storage area.
The storage area is gonna be.
Correct, everything else stays the same.
That's right, right, Brian? That's correct.
Correct, the storage, the, the, the nursery stock layer that needs to be moved back to the property line.
To twenty five feet, you're right.
Okay, so that's our motion, do we, and we have a second?
I second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried, thanks for your patience. This is my favorite, my favorite one.
You can do this.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I thought he was gonna do his correspondence, I was gonna say, we can do that in about ten minutes.
We already did that, all in favor, aye, yeah, so carried, we're outta here.
But now I feel confident that God is in his.
Yeah.
And he has his project to go, and he's gonna go out and say.